Very good morning. Great, welcome. Thank you. Called meeting to order. It's six o'clock. Let's put the flags on, please.
I really. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. So a nice little cozy house day. Thank you. Attendance. We have all of our commissioners in attendance right now. We have one seat that just officially became open. And we'll address that later in the meeting. Everybody's here in attendance today. And first on the list, just open it up. Talk about fire department financials. Turn that over to.
Yeah, I will get started if I can. And I'd like to begin by just addressing some of the frustration that was expressed in the article that appeared in the career herald, which is valid and I completely understand. I would like to gently respectfully push back on the notion that we have wasted any time though, and I genuinely feel we entered into what really led into a soul plan relationship to analyze the fire district. Figure out where finances are at, and I believe that we've provided a product that really can be a rose nut for the district, particularly as we leave this meeting today. We've also uncovered some things in terms of where money was and wasn't, or how it was used specifically, the impact fees with the help of Ben and his staff. That needed to be uncovered. I think the disappointment arises from the fact that our goal is to provide this board options by the end of Jim. And one of the options because of the analysis became unavailable to us. Right? We hope to have three great options to place in front of you. And we really don't. We're going to talk about how this fire district goes forward as the fire department. But I believe there's a value even in that. And I believe it gets you off of the roller coaster that this district has been on to some extent. Will we merge? Are we solvent? You're going to have a plan going forward and you're going to know that indefinitely. You are the Enam plot fire department and you can start making some decisions with that in mind. So I think there's been great value to this process. I hope at the conclusion of this meeting tonight, you feel the same. I'm proud of the work that we have done for you, and I think we're going to leave you in a better place when we leave the meeting. And I just wanted to put that on the record so that we all kind of start from the same place. I think we can come out of tonight with a good plan for the district. Wonderful. And with that, unless there's questions or comments from commissioners, I'm going to let Director Glass begin his report.
Awesome. Thank you. So yeah, I'll run through this. And if anytime you have any questions, feel free to pause me. I do want this to be kind of an open dialogue in that sense. I will save time at the end as well for questions that folks might have. So to kick it off, we got a brief agenda. First, I'll talk about the kind of linear versus compounded growth models that we put together. We have one of each. And we'll talk about that in more detail later on. We'll go through the assumptions that went into those models, some recommendations that we have around the course correction. And so I also want to throw this out there. It course correcting is very common. I mean, all agencies do it at some point. Things change. We react to what's going on in the environment, especially during economic uncertainty, when you know A B and everything like this is kind of going up and going down. And so the way I look at this overall is simply a type of course correction. The recommendations that I put in here are all around costs. And so I've tried to put a very objective hat on. There might be things in here that, you know, folks might have personal feelings about. I just wanted everybody to know that I am not planning on addressing those here. I'm planning on dressing purely the cost elements. I will say though, I took two tenants to mind with putting this together, which are one, no layoffs and two, no sacrifice of any personal protective equipment. We'll go over the two cost flow models and then I'll do a quick comparison between those models and the baseline that we had seen. Last meeting, I have a capex bridge. The capex is one of the items that I spent a lot of time rearranging because I thought if I can move things around in time, we can still get what we're looking for. It's just maybe a not right now kind of thing. And so I use that a lot as a lever to get us where we, you know, into a solvency situation. I'll have a summary at the end and then I'll save room for questions and discussion.
So please really do interrupt with questions. I think this will be so much more productive that it can be a dialogue.
Yes, absolutely. So the first chart I have here is simply to show the difference between the versions that we put together and talk a little bit about the methodology behind it. And so on the kind of 2025 and earlier, those black dots that you see, those are your actuals every year in your assessed value. Moving from 25 to the right and on, we have three different approaches. The blue is that linear aggression model that we put together. The orange is the five percent compound annual growth. Those are the two models that we'll talk about today. And for kicks, I threw in that 10% compound annual growth number in there as well. I have not modeled on this one. We did initially create a model, but simply just to look and see what our bookends look like. I don't think that the 10% compounded annual growth is realistic. And so we didn't put something like that moving forward. So I do want to pause here really quick because I think I wanted to see if anybody has any questions on how the two methodologies work. I'll talk really quick about linear, which is you're basically adding the same amount of money every single year. And when you look at these, these dots on the left, essentially all you're doing with regression is you're finding a line that fits closest between all those points with the minimum distance between them. I won't go too far into details on how that map works, but essentially there's a form fitting and you're right around the 95th percentile there. For the five percent compound annual growth, again, very simple. I just took 25 as your base on. I said, let's compound this five percent every single year. The main difference between the two methodologies is in the way that the shape of the trend will go. And so in a linear, it's linear, it's a line, right? It'll just go in one direction. It won't move up or bend down. Where in both the compounded, those are polynomial in the sense that they will continue to go up. And you can see the difference between just a five and a 10 is quite dramatic. If you look at the difference between 2020, sorry, 2040, you know, it's saying it would be over 20 billion versus somewhere around the 10 billion range. And so even a small amount, which the only difference between that is that five percent has a big impact in the long term. So any questions on how the methodology works?
So in this case, are you, in order to get those two pieces, are you deliberately doing something of savings or holding off on certain things or using things that are beyond levy materials?
No. So this is purely assuming that your, this is just A B, yeah, pure A B. And the only thing that these two lines will inform in that sense is your revenue side from, from the levy. The rest of this presentation will talk a lot more about the cost savings. So if you think about it, the gap between your revenue and your expenditures is what we're trying to widen here. And so I'll talk a lot about what we did in the models. That being said, the only difference between the five percent and aggression models is the revenue itself. I kept both identical from a cost savings person.
So just wondering, yeah.
And is there a reasonable like prediction or assumption of what percent our area of growth might be over a period of time? Or is that just a?
It's really hard to say. And even the last few years are you've had a lot of ups and downs. In fact, you went up a lot and then you came back down. And so because of that, I would say it's kind of been volatile, especially with COVID recently. So it is hard to predict. And what I will do is I'll talk about how to react to changes in these numbers as they come forward in time. So like when you get your 2026 actuals, how to update the model and then what in the model to look for to say, hey, I think I've got growth room or nope, keep it buckled down for now.
Some indicators.
Yep, exactly. In both of these have a solvency at the ends. Obviously their five percent compound growth starts to diverge towards the ends. And so you're getting a lot more revenue. And since you start catching back up, the way I would look at is as you get more actuals, look, update this model, look for that trend and see, hey, is that running excess that I have enough to fund the next thing that I want? Whether that's head counts, a new apparatus, whatever it happens to be.
So then the formula also would. We have some weird stuff that's going to be happening with all of the new builds that we're getting, some of which we will receive capacity for as far as some tax leverage on. And other things we're not going to receive it for a period of time down the line. Is that also factored into this piece?
No, it's purely based on historical actuals. In that sense, what I would recommend is if you do have some kind of bottoms up indicator, meaning and I'll give you an example. So if you knew and because permits, for example, I've got a thousand homes going into this master plant community. I'm making this up now. And I know the average home value is going to be, again, making this up $750,000. You can do the math really quick and say, I think we'll do a thousand homes a year, knowing that you can then add that on top of this baseline and say, hey, this linear growth will give me basically if it's just purely A B. I'm not assuming new buildings are coming in. It's your, it's your town staying the same size. The value goes up as your costs go up. But if you knew that a community was coming in some kind of incremental growth, you could add this on top of here and then model out what that would look like and how it would impact your revenue based on whatever your current ratio is. So I do assume that because both of these models do not break 6% that you'll maintain, you won't erode your levy, but there are years, and I'll talk about this more at the end, where you go beyond the 6% growth because of the way the levy rules work, you cannot capture above 6%. And so again, making this up, say you had a couple of years of 10% in a row, the dollar amount that you have versus the max, the dollar 50 would start to become less and less every year. And again, one of my recommendations is monitor this until it gets to a point where like, no, I need to do a levy lid lift, go out for that and restore that dollar 50.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Conversely, I think to your question there, the taxed deferred building that we've got planned, right? So that would be the inverse. We would just take that out of our calculation.
Yeah, if you knew, yeah, if there's an incremental building that you know, you won't have a taxable presence on, I would, I would subtract that amount out, although it'd have to be a pretty sizable building to have a material impact if it's just one building.
I was just gonna say, the beauty of linear regression is it captures those small ups and downs for the last decade plus. So it's accounting for that really. If we start plugging in little spikes or little drops, they probably need to be large planned communities, that kind of thing.
Like how large? Because we do have.
A apartment complex or.
Right, exactly. And so how's that going to affect? Because immediately I can just see the regression in it. Because the needs will be great because of the people that are on, that are living in there. It's going to pull us into a situation where we're not getting the revenue for it. And yet at the same time, we have to have the capacity with which to be able to serve our citizens. And so that I think is a real, it's a cumbersome thing in my mind.
And some of that's coming in Hank's presentation in regard to the expenditure side. But we did want to make sure that there was a good understanding of the linear aggression methodology. A common misunderstanding is that it doesn't include any growth. So we're just assuming no growth. That's not it at all, right? We're assuming the same growth that we've seen in this community for years.
So but that regressive growth does, how does that play onto this with those communities that are going to come in like that?
So it's, it's, it's considered just what she's mentioned. It's considering all the historical growth you've had. If there is new growth that you know about, it is not necessarily considering that outside what has historically been. So if, and again, I'll go back to like, I'll use the extreme example. Say you had a 10,000 home master plan community, that would be a monumental amount of growth. You know that the model is not accounting for it. You've never historically had something like that before. And so that's why I would make an adjustment. Yeah. But for one building, I probably wouldn't.
It's not, it'll be, it'll be a development basically. Of untouchable stuff for 10 years.
10 years, yeah.
12.
Yeah, definitely something we ought to take a look at. Yeah, probably still another.
We might need your formula.
Sure. No, it's, it's, it's all in the model and I'm happy. I mentioned it, Ben, but I'm phone call away to if you want to have any questions or you want to adjust something, just let me know.
Okay, thank you.
I built it in a way so that it's meant to be adjusted and, and, and you can use it for many years to come. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So jumping into the assumptions real quick. So as I mentioned, we have the two models, one using the historical actuals and the linear regression approach. And then one using the five percent compounded annual growth approach. Both of those were just our revenue drivers. We do start with the 2025 budget as our baseline and I made adjustments from there. In cases where there haven't been adjustments, that is that five percent compounded annual growth on expenditures as well. The last piece, and it just because from our last meeting, we talked a lot about impact fees. We did reforecast impact fees at the rate of $65,000 a year, again, growing at that four or five percent range. All right. Now the, the big important slides, recommended, recommended changes. And again, I'm putting my consultant hat on here. I really wanted to put down into this model, what we, I think is the most cost effective, but I tried to take any subjectivity out of it whatsoever. And so there might be some things in here that are, you know, personal choices for certain individuals. I just wanted to call that out that I'm really just addressing the cost side in this one. And we can save some time at the end for, for discussion sometime as well. So the first item is we did include that impact fee correction that we had discussed in our last meeting. Currently I don't have any, anywhere to spend that. However, Ben's been doing some research. It could be that we may be able to buy that $300,000 ish training prop using the impact fees. I will say I did remove that training prop completely. We thought it wasn't something that was a must have. So in a certain sense, if you're able to use your impact fees for it, absolutely go for it. Those impact fees will just be sitting there. Taking up space that could be used for, you know, anything you can find, find them for. Or find use for them for. The second piece is I do have Ben as interim fire chief. And this model does not have any backfill plan for the DC position that he currently occupies. Again, this is the most cost effective option for now can be revisited as, you know, funds change over time. The only net incremental role that I have in this model is assuming that fire admin role gets filled. Other than that, essentially hiring is frozen. That was part of the tenders not to lay off anybody, but also that's where a lot of cost savings comes from because why spend a ton of time moving capital around in time? The cool thing about capital is you spend it once and then you don't have to spend it again for 10 to 15 years. With hiring people, you're spending that same amount every single year, and that definitely erodes your expenditures over time. The last, the fourth piece in here, we reduce our professional services within the general, general funds. That includes ending the contract with us. And the reason I put that in there is simply because it's, it's, it's a sizable expenditure that we think we can remove. I am phone call away if you need anything. And it just did not simply feel right to have something in here that was costing you money that we could pull out and save you some money for that in the future.
And I can't stress enough, particularly in regard to Chief Hammond, assuming an interim role or even in the fire services contract with us. It is not our intent to make value judgments for the commission. So these are simply some buttons and levers that we have identified that get back to that solvency point we were looking for. So whatever conversation would need to occur between you and your deputy chief is, it's not for us. Okay.
Understood. No decisions have been made.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Second to last here is I did cap overtime at nine percent of salaries and benefits. As you'll see in this model, going from the linear aggression, which is kind of your bare bones to the five percent, the five percent starts to grow over time. And it looks like you can start adding things back. That'll be a decision up to you as far as what you want to add back. First, if I did have a recommendation, start with overtime. Overtime for me has historically been very difficult to predict. You can have big events that can swing it wildly. In a very lean fire department, you likely will use more overtime. The nine percent is something I got from the average of 23 and 24. In fact, I just took the higher of the two. They're almost the same. And so if you were to add back, I would probably start there just because it might be nice to have a little bit of buffer and overtime in case you need it because you never know when you're, when you're going to need it.
So you definitely know, if I'm going to repat, we cap this. You would, with the exception of the fire admin rule, you would freeze the hiring.
Correct.
Of everybody.
Yep.
And how long would that freeze?
I have it in this model indefinitely. Now I'll talk about why we, what you would look for when you're ready to start adding back. And I'll, 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 I'll address that in a couple of slides here when you guys see the charts. And then the last one, I do have a whole chart on just this one. I did a ton of these. So I'll talk capital adjustments in that side. There's a lot of detail there. And so I'll, I'll save that one for the, for the capital side. So this first view is the regression view with all those adjustments that we discussed. And I'll draw your attention to row 18 there at the bottom. And so what that number is, is that is the amount of excess above your minimum 30% fund balance target. And so what we're looking at here is you want to see that number continue to grow over time. As you can see, you have some years here where it looks all right. You're hanging around the 40 to 50% range. That is primarily me moving capital to the right and saving money, trying to leverage investment interest as much as we can. You'll notice that when we get towards 20, the tail end of the 20, the model at 2033 to 2035, we are just right there at the 30% mark. You do have a model that goes out all the way to 2042. I took it out that far, but I would say whatever I put in for 2042, I'm not, I don't have a crystal ball. So take it with a grain of salt. The further to the right you go, the less accurate this model is. And so what I would say, and I'll go into this in more detail is, you know, monitor it for a couple of years as these numbers move up and down. The model will show you how that affects 2033, 2034 and 2035. Once those get into an area where you have gap remaining, that's when you know that you're ready to start hiring back or new apparatus, or you know, whatever it is, whatever the thing is that you want to prioritize over time.
So do you have some disaster in here too? Because if we have inflation and recession at the same time, does it throw off this model quite a bit?
It would depend on what's driving it. So I would say with recession and inflation, your CPI would be going up, but I don't know how that would affect A V. Typically those two move in the same direction. I'm not sure. So do I have buffer in here? Not that's beyond what you see above in that row there. It's as lean as I could make it. The, the linear regression model does assume a very small amount of growth between this year and next year. However, it immediately starts to catch up. So just to food for thought, your growth year on year in linear aggression world is only about 1.3% from this year to next year. But in the year after that, in 27, it's going to start at about 5.6% and then it's going to slowly go down from there, meaning it'll be like 5.6, 5.4, 5.2, because you're adding the same number every year, but your baseline is not changing as it's, it's not compounding in that sense. So where the five percent model, you're actually growing that even your baseline over time as well. So you're not adding the same number. You're actually adding more every year, which is a big difference between the two. Realistically, unless something like you just mentioned happens, I would envision you're probably going to land somewhere between the two in the long run. You might have some years, you have a lot of growth, some years, maybe even have negative growth, but you had a year ago. I'm guessing it'll be somewhere in the middle unless something changes. And again, making this up, master plan community comes in five years from now. You've got a thousand homes that significantly alters that path, in which case then you can course correct again from here.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it is in the details.
Yeah, you'll, you'll see all the, yeah. And Ben and Laura have the model too. I'm going to go through and clean up all the notes and stuff. So it's a kind of a working model in that sense. And so if you want to dive really into this weeds, we can, we can get there. I don't have it here. I try to keep it as kind of like high level. Yeah, I just kind of explain what's going on, but if we want to dive in, we definitely have the ability to.
That was actually my question. All of this stuff is being presented. They have access to it to move forward next year and the year after. Laura is, they're comfortable with this.
Yep. So the next one is the same exact concept, only with that five percent compound annual growth. Same thing. I'll draw your attention to that row 18. So that is the amount above the 30% you, upon balance target you have. You can see here, here, you have a lot more to work with. In that, that five percent is, is pretty strong, especially as you move to the right. And so what I'd be looking for is that this number, whatever you plan on spending, say you're going to add a person, you're going to add a rig, whatever it is, that that would be consistent across the, the years. A rig is a little different in the sense of you pull it in, it's a one-time expenditure for the most part. It's a one-off. The person though, is going to consume those funds over time. And because I look to the right and I see that you have, you know, you have some wiggle room here. If this was the scenario that actually came to fruition, you could start adding back. I kind of went to the, all the way down to the minimum I could. And then my, I would say start slowly incrementally adding back from there. Don't take this as like, oh, I saw a 5%. That's a great, I'll just add it all back now. Take some time, add it back incrementally. We don't know what the future will look like. Therefore, building some buffer up is probably the wisest thing to do.
Yep.
So this one is that row 18 that we were looking at, and this is the three scenarios all in one. And so the, the compound, the five percent compound and the growth is the green line. You can see it does start to build up and grow over time. The orange line is kind of just, just meeting it. It's kind of bounces up and down around that $6 million range. You can see it goes up and down a little bit, but it doesn't have degradation. It doesn't have growth. This is the unstable, but I'm not really adding anything. And then of course the baseline that we saw in our last meeting. And so all the work that we've done has got us up from what we had in that blue line up into the orange and, and green areas there.
Wow. This is the one that blows my mind right now.
There was a lot of adjustments we made to, to get there. A lot of it was on the, the, the salaries and benefit side. So kind of the, the freeze, if you will. But then the next slide after this is all the capital movement. So I'll go through these and feel free to pause any time. A lot of these are left pocket, right pocket in that I said, hey, let's push it down the road a little bit. We're not going to do it right now, but we will get to it. There are some exceptions where we've removed some tenders and situations. We thought we're going to replace the frontline, but we won't replace both the frontline and the backline in that sense. So I'll just start working through them year by year. Total savings that we're looking to achieve within the timeframe is about two and a half million dollars. Although there's a time value of money element to this as well. I just want to call that out. So first one is this, we simply removed that $300,000 training prop. If we can use impact fees for it, absolutely go for it. It's kind of in a certain sense, impact fees are like free money in that sense. They're not going to be able to be used for everything. So, so use them where you can. In fact, if there's a situation where you can use impact fees, I wouldn't even hesitate to use them. I mean, they're, use them or lose them kind of thing. So.
Good. The language. Pardon? Be able to use for that. Yeah. I mean, but in the, in. I think we need language for it.
Do you have that, like, capital facilities plan?
Yep.
To capitalize on the use of that piece. And even then you're still faced with that same threshold. Are you adding capacity to what you do versus replacing equipment? One is very, very prescriptive and one is not a lot of.
I was just going to see if you, the best, best form of flattery is to be able to take somebody else's work and say, okay, let's just use this and cut and paste.
Yeah.
If you have something like that, it'd be kind of nice to share.
Yeah. So I mean, it to Ben's point, you would need to add it to your capital plan first. And then I, here's what I do. I talk to my lawyer every time I want to spend them. And so I don't. I don't hesitate with that because I don't want to have to go backwards on something. And so I'll, yeah. So I, that's, I would recommend the exact same thing. I say, hey, here's my situation. Yeah. So the next one, we did move some things around here. So we pulled in an ATV, we pulled in a brush rig and we pulled one tender back. The model that we had proposed before this had pushed those up to 2029. We had already started to try to move stuff around. We brought those back in. However, we then we actually completely subtracted, so not getting it one of those additional tenders. And that would be for replacing the reserve. 2027, no changes. 2028, same deal. In this scenario, we're only going to buy one instead of two pumpers. 2029. So what you'll notice here is you'll see kind of an inverse of two of these things. So if you go back to line three, you'll see we pulled out one of those and just moved in time. So you'll see that's delta between the one, three and the two, three there. 2030, no change. 2031, similar to 2026, where we pulled an A car back in, we pulled a staff rig back in as well. 2032, no changes. 2033, same deal. Pull the, pull another staff rig back. For 2034, you'll see the flip flop there between 2031 and 2034, and then no changes in 2035. All in, that's a net 2.2 savings on capital within this timeframe. Some things are out in the 2042 range, but again, I would kind of take those with a grain of salt, assuming that you'll know a lot more, you know, 10 years from now than you do now. So this last one's really just kind of a summary of what we've gone over. Again, I'm looking at this as a course correction. You know, this thing's happened with any organization at some point. And so really the objective here is to simply reduce costs with some tenants and those tenants being the no layoffs and no sacrificing personal protective equipment. My recommendation, continue to monitor your capital plus general fund rolling balance, that, that line 18 that we saw, which is also those, the visual in the chart there. Once you see that amount consistent across all years, that equals to whatever the thing is you're looking to pull in next. Say, for example, another, another staff member. Then you know that you're ready to, to go ahead and make that. I would wait a couple of years of, to see, to, to build up some fund allowance to see where you're at before making some of those decisions. Unless something, you know, you find some other revenue source as well. In the meantime, similarly, that kind of goes hand in hand with, you know, monitoring that, monitoring your revenue. If you have a couple of really great years in a row, expect that that will erode your dollar. And so what could happen, this is, you know, would be worst cases. You, you get a bunch of good years in a row, you max out, you don't get to capture anything above the 6% and then you level off. You would have to do a lid lift to get that back. Otherwise you'd be sitting at, you know, something sub a dollar 50 and not able to capture that. And then lastly, and this is just a trick, one of the big tricks I use for all this is use capital to make short-term adjustments. So if you're like, woo, we had two good years in a row. The next year was really, the year after that was really rough. Move capital around. Capital's a great lever. It's a one-time deal. Use that to make adjustments to your short-term budget. Use that uh to make adjustments to your short-term budget, knowing that um capital is something you usually can move around a little bit. I mean, you might get to a phase where you're like, oh, I really have to replace this thing, but you know, try to try to push them out as long as you can if if um they are levers for you.
So a question I have here is a couple of things. One, and I do want to make it so that um. Everyone in here understands, um particularly our firefighters, that when you hire somebody, it's not just X for that year, it just gets bigger. And so um, because I I want our firefighters to hear, that's why we're so wanting to slow down on some things. I don't want to have to riff anybody. And so when they're doing some considerations of seeing a pot of money, is it's been said, here, look at this pot of money. It's not that big when it comes down to how we can keep you until you retire or you decide that you're done. Yeah. Um, so the other part, okay, I'm going to slide that over is we have um. We have IT with you and we also have dispatch. Is that part and parcel of of things that are going to be in this budget as well, or are we going to be talking about that on on a?
The IT cut hour is included. Uh, in that model, I have a full bottoms up on what needs to get converted over. So there will be a one-time cost. Um, I don't have it in front of me, and so I don't want to quote the number, but I think it's about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Um, we can double check that for you. And then there's an ongoing cost on that as well. Uh, but all that is in here and the ongoing cost does include a third-party professional to help help with some of that. I don't envision they'd have to be here all the time, but certainly for setup, coming in tuning things, fixing stuff like that as well. So that is included in this cost.
Um. Are there opportunities in which uh because because of the training that we have done uh with Puget Sound, does that stop? Um, with this or?
The consortium separate.
Yeah, I just was trying to see how that fits into this also.
Um, relationship in terms of fleet, uh training, cares, all that continues on as it has.
Okay.
Yep, correct.
It's good to know. Um, and I think the the other part that I would be looking at is uh if we have to do, like you've said that you're available by call. But there's a point where it's like mutual aid, where it becomes a line item. We don't want to have to be your line item, but we might need some extra mentoring in there. Is there a room for us to be able to plot out some opportunities to have you come in and say, okay, we see where you're at? You're raising, um, but we need a little more TLC in there.
What we'd like to do is, if if words comfortable, is keep it informal. Our proposal would be to end the collaborative services agreement at the gym. So that still gets another month. Chief Hamid order to have access to Hank and learn how to use this tool, like ask questions and play with it. And then going forward from that, we we have an existing collaborative services agreement between the district and Puget Sound. We can really do whatever we want, whenever we want.
Okay.
It becomes a body of work that requires an exchange of funds.
Right.
We can address it then.
Okay.
I don't anticipate that, you know, Chief Hamid comes down to our building on a regular basis for ten different meetings he has to attend.
Okay.
So the relationship's going to continue even without the financial piece.
Okay.
I I wouldn't feel good about bringing out a proposal to cut expenditures and then continuing to charge you in the back half of the year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for our services.
Appreciate that. Yeah, and it is important um that it was kind of well said, where we're in a situation now, we're kind of like in that middle. We're just not big enough. And we're bigger than, you know, we're 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 bigger than small, but not big enough to be tall yet.
And and keep in mind, and I suppose it goes without saying, everything we have modeled for you is based on existing revenue. Should the board choose to find additional revenue for the fire district, it's a completely separate conversation and obviously changes this a great deal. But what we know and why we didn't speak to it in this presentation is that's a big decision. Engaging the political landscape and what you think the the voters would would be interested in supporting is not something that's going to happen.
Right. We're having to dig out.
But I will offer you that we have a plan here. I believe there there's a couple of pain points to be sure, but not losing staff.
That's a big deal.
Continuing to get a new pumper on schedule if not to um maintaining all the PPE. The the district has a path back to a pretty good level of solvency, even in that linear regression law.
So let me ask another question. Um. At some point. I mean, there's going to be some growth. I just don't really see us to come in like an Auburn. Um, I mean, I can see Buckley becoming more like EdumClaws now. We'll just be a little bit bigger. We we might be like a smaller Bonnie Lake. At some point, though, it just seems like um agencies are coming together. And it's like, how do we start working on that kind of an interface? Um, by leaving basically a track line open so that we're not stuck as being the last fire department. That is the furthest over in the in the King County.
I think continuing to collaborate and staying friendly neighbors and.
But it's like we'll have to do, we'll have to do more though, because of the NFPA standards, we're we're not going to be able to do the out of this station. And hit those standards when you have to go uh to the other side of the district. Um, but at some point, I can see that it's going to have to be a marriage somewhere. And so how do we make ourselves commit to um? It's going to have to be beyond this five percent piece too. Um, how do we start to actually become a little more aggressive? So that we can be more aligned to getting there faster, but reasonably.
I think to me, it's the only pathway there is staying with funding. I did, I because no other district can can uh. Burn cost to cover up area, right? So it, to me, it feels or seems to be that we are the fire department that our community converted.
Right.
And until our community grows in such a way that it's able to burn more than we are who we are, right?
And I do get that piece, but I guess the part that happens is who gets on board first? Because, for example, if we do, then it pushes forty-four and it pushes Black Diamond to have to look at this. I don't want to be the last kid on the block in.
I feel less concerned about that. I think it would make sense and just.
Well, I mean.
The economy.
I don't see that it's a race and who.
No, it's not.
Who can consolidate quicker?
You're just in better shape um being on board quicker than being.
I will say though that the, I think we take for granted the relationship our departments have in zone three. It's very unique.
It is.
In the state of Washington, it's unique nationally. Um, the gentlemen sitting right here are are all solid. They're not making any overtime. They didn't make any additional incentive pay for for working on this project. But every one of them believes that doing right by EdumClaw and a healthy EdumClaw Fire Department is good for Puget Sound.
I like that.
We should agree with that, right?
And we have.
That's not going away. That doesn't go away with retirements. That doesn't go away with um the termination executive service contract. That kind of relationship is just in our DNA now.
Right.
And as long as that stays true, you don't know when those doors open and when the opportunities come.
And that is true too. That's true too. Uh, you know, um, I do want to make a point though, that we do have great people that come in and help us with their mutual aid. Um, forty-four has been phenomenal as we go to forty-four to help them. Um, and I just really want to put in a.
Should really all the uh departments in South King County, I mean, how many Tony calls Auburn, Puget Sound, you know, I think every, every call that's that's just a little bit out of the norm. You know, you see a Puget Sound.
Help is coming.
Right? Yeah, so.
I'd like to jump in here. This this proposal was talking about the the financial savings or the reduction. It gives us some time to look at what we need to do for our future. We need to, this department needs organizational stability. And whether we do something in the future with another agency or we stay on our own for ten, twenty years.
Right.
We're going to need additional funding.
Yeah.
At some point, we're going to need it for a fire station. Um, the buck fifty will not cover that by any means. So we need to make sure our our house is in order and whoever's the fire chief of this organization and any other fire chief around us. They're always going to be looking at opportunities if it's if it's good for their organization, their community, to have that conversation again. Then that conversation will be had. And where we're at financially. I would imagine other organizations would want to make sure we're financially at a stable.
Absolutely.
Uh, point in our life so that they're not taking on a burden.
And that's really where I was going. I was too chicken to bring out.
No. Something that we need to do regardless, and this is, these minor course corrections are a big thing for wanting the financial analysis and the projections is because we were getting more money in.
Right.
For so many years, we hadn't had money. Well, so much work has been done to conservatively save and put money away, just like we do personally. I wanted to look at it and be, okay, this money we have, is this a good feeling? Are we on the right track? Or do we, or is it a false sense of security?
Right.
That if we kept this track, that it's like, it's almost like a interest-only loan. Oh, it feels good. I bought this house.
Now you get the payment.
So I really wanted to look at long term, where are we at? Can we hire people? Can we not? And. I wouldn't imagine another organization would want to come on board if there is financial uncertainty until we had something squared away. And I think for our community, we need that square way regardless of we're going to contract somebody or not. We need to make sure that we have long term.
Yeah, I think this gives us a roadmap for stability.
It does.
And the fact that we can adjust it and tweak it as growth and spending comes up, that that's awesome.
Nice job, Ben.
Yeah. Living spreadsheet.
It is, it is a tool for sure, not simply a.
I think I think another piece of work that's been uh done and done extremely well is is the work that Chief and Laura have done. In the background, adding to our ability to analyze the costs that that are there, right? Um, so I think just that work next year will improve what this looks like. Could you, would you agree, being able to more uh granularly assess our spending? Yeah, and and the way that I, the idea behind the model I put together was something I wanted to package up and be able to hand off to someone like Ben and Laura. So they can take it and make changes to it. Be like, what happens if I do this? What happens if I hire these person? What happens if I pull a rig in, I buy it sooner? It has the ability to do all these changes and add to it as well. Um, and so I I envision this as a kind of a living, breathing model that as new information comes in, we add it to it. And then we continue to look at it and how it projects, you know, our financial outlook moving forward. And based on that, then we can make better informed decisions. So yeah, that was, that's exactly what I was was trying to do. So.
Thank you for all your work on this and sharing the tools with us to keep it going and not just holding that knowledge in for your own.
So this is a little operational, but it does have money to it. At one point, you were talking about um. Having like maybe an aid car come from outside with so that we could put two more people back in our station and dedicate. Is uh, will that make a difference on this?
I would say the aid car is itself would is a kind of a one-time expenditure, but staffing it is the one that I would be more concerned about long term. Um, my recommendation would be give it a little bit of time until you see some civility build that up, until you're more confident that the future funds are available to ensure that those folks have um, you know, salary benefits.
And then along that same line, what happens if we were to get an aid car outside aid car? You know, like uh one of the private.
Oh, like a Tri-Man?
Yeah.
Do a, do a part-time fire alliance smaller.
Yeah.
They're maybe here for twelve hours.
Yeah.
There's so much uncertainty right now in GMT that I would be hesitant to suggest you start on that project, right? We we unfortunately uh started our project, the first one in the state, uh just in time to see those funds threatened.
Okay.
So we're we're still doing fine. We're continuing with our pilot. We love what it's producing for us. But to be candid, without the GMT funds from the feds.
Absolutely.
That we'd have to relook at all our assumptions.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And this assumption still have GMT money built into it for you right now. And if that.
That's a good story.
That will be.
That is a whole nother look that makes your son.
Sounds about right, yeah.
Yeah. And that's what I'm saying.
Food for that too. We will be submitting in about two months for our first tranche of GMT money. So uh, our consultants are actually going to be on prem here in a couple of weeks. So I hopefully will have more information, although I have a feeling they also don't have as much certainty. So as soon as we find out more, um, well, I mean, we're trumping at the bit to to react to this as well. Because the way that our program works is that it is currently not break even. So we are continuing to be in the hole for the next two years, even with GMT money. So as soon as we find out if if it is the case that those are threatened, we will publicly pull the plug on it, to be frank.
And then in our situation, how would we, is pulling the plug actually could push us right into ripping?
You, well, yeah, so I mean, however you're staffing that, you're getting roughly, you know, half a million dollars a year from that. Um, the rig itself, you could possibly resell, um, but how you staffed it, because those are your own employees. I mean, that that would be a potential risk there.
You know, operationally, we we need need aid cars to transport when our rigs are out of service with the inability to have private ambulance come out here regularly.
Right.
It's, we would need it and just having to find the funds other somewhere, the place to make up the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars approximately that we get for it and.
I agree, Ben. You do this exercise again without GMT funds pushing more stuff, right?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I'm just kind of kicking it up in here.
And anything that we would do for a uh program with GMT, we'd want to make sure it doesn't take away from our budget. Cause we use that as part of our budget, but it's something that we do not control. Just like development, we don't control what development comes in. We don't control the type of patients that we take and the TNT is going to be available.
See, when I look at that, I look at, we have a roof that we're going to have to put on your house. And so you need to sock away some money, which is, I think that's what you kept saying is put some money aside. Uh, and keep putting it aside so that you have basically a money day fund.
Yep.
Or something to take those emergent needs or something you can see clearly coming up with capital. Um, and I appreciated that. Um, and that's what led me to this.
And I, and I think I'd like to add to that real quick. I think that's what, or the way I view our our um. Decisions over the past few years is that we were intentionally trying to put money aside, right?
Right.
Uh, but we were doing it with the tools that we had, right? And the and the available labor that we had in in just uh uh Chief Ferrer and Ashley pretty much. Uh, until just a couple of years ago, right? Um, so yeah, so I think EdumClaw Fire has been, you know, on a good path.
Right.
Just not with the, not with the quality of tools that we're able to gain from Puget Sounds.
And I like to remind people, we started off at eighty thousand dollars when I came in.
Yeah.
That's it. We only had eighty thousand dollars during the, we are not in that same place anymore.
This model retains the three percentage companies that I think you should be proud to have achieved and loathe to let go of.
Mm-hmm. Now, do, do we keep, uh, what do, what do we do with the, the ladder strike?
The quench?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's uh trying to look at surplus in that and using that, the goal would be using the those federal funds. Let them or let have them let us use it towards the purchase of another apparatus.
That is sure.
And that's, I just, it's kind of like paying it forward if they'll allow us to do that. Um, we don't have the staff or uh Flint. Um, we have more apparatus than we have people. And when our our folks get called, they're going to be on the primary units, the engine and the tender or the engine and an aid car.
And then mutual aid for ladder.
That'll save us, that'll save us some, part of that modeling in here is that'll save us money annually for fire garage and surplus in a couple of other apparatus as well.
I appreciate.
And we're still waiting for an answer if we can reallocate those grant money funds.
So I'm saying these things too, because people are going to be hearing our conversations. They have to be able to see how we came to where we are, what our deliberations are. And some hard choices that have to be made. And and by just having this available for people, it makes it a lot easier for all of us to be able to um to appeal to our constituents.
It uh, the the thing that makes me hopeful, if it was just, hey, this is money-wise, that would be a challenge. But yeah, this organization is fiscally has been very frugal.
Right.
Frugal, excuse me, frugal for as long as it's been around. And they've done so much to get to where we're at, to actually have millions of dollars in a bank account.
Mm-hmm.
And it's really just making sure, okay, what do we need to do to honor what was done, keep that same thought going, but also planning for the future? Cause just working off a levy and how the demands of the fire service are growing, we can't keep up. But what do we need to do? This is not, when I say this is a short-term solution, when I think short-term fire service is multiple years. Long-term for me is ten, twenty years.
Me too.
And so these are not long-term things of not filling these positions and not have an answer for funding is not a long-term solution. But this is, we never want to make a decision in crisis and we want to make sure that we're intentional. Uh, we, we know that if we have to go out to the voter for more money, that's a huge thing and we do not take that lightly. And we really want to know that, okay, this is why we need the money. We've shown what we've, we've tried to do everything we can to leverage, you know, mergers, consolidations, you know. Uh, consortium type things to save money, but this is what we need and why, and really make sure that when we ask, it's it's because we need it, not because of.
Yeah.
Feels good. No, yes, this is why we need it. And we need to do a good job of showing that. We're not in a position to say why and what we need right now.
Mm-hmm.
I think this time is really stabilizing our funding, looking at our finances and working to show what we need and part of that capital facility is now will help.
I like that.
Know what we need to spend money on.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Sauce factor, I think we covered that. Thank you for all of your efforts that you've poured into this. It's incredible. It's incredible service that you provided to us. It's incredible service that you provided to us. Appreciate it.
Well, if it is, uh, if the board's decision that we will mutually uh in this contract at the sixteen month mark. Um, then we can take action on that over the next couple of weeks in our next board meeting. So it's not gonna have to be addressed tonight and Chief him and I'll be in communication on that piece of it.
We do wish, there's uh two of you who will be retiring. And it's great. It is, it is really, really gonna be nice. And I wish you both, I just.
Thank you.
Just a lot of just good life and, and just go out there and give them hell.
They'll have a ton of free time on their hands, so.
You both started as very young men, right?
Very young.
Very young.
I have not tried a building yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Madam Chair, we'll excuse ourselves and let you continue with your meeting unless there's anything further for us.
I think everybody is satisfied with, yeah, thank you, cover. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You too.
Thank you.
And that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, they, I, I'll go read give you.
You're cheering me on in retirement. More than a piss bum.
Nice job. Shoot on this gun.
He was like.
I feel weird going in the middle of it.
I didn't wanna choke. It's, it's on TV.
We're just waiting on one more member to come in from the lobby this, join the meeting.
I went to GE and B today. It's still, it's still in my car.
Love it. It's a good place.
But your dad was speaking like, yeah.
Okay, so that was fire department financials. Uh, is there any discussion remaining for the executive services contract? Do you feel that was?
I think that.
That was clever, covered by their.
Yep, I feel.
Proposals.
So.
So he did say about the IT piece, uh, so the dispatch, are we gonna be okay with that?
Dispatch is separate.
Okay. Is there any, I, I, is there any integration with that IT as it relates to Valleycom? I guess that's.
It's just part of IT service.
Very much so.
Yeah.
Those are estimates and numbers that we got from their IT and Hank has been working on. We, there's a lot of work that still needs to be.
Okay.
And the IT contract is separate from the executive services contract. So until we decouple and do all that work, it's not gonna be a quick process.
Okay.
There's a lot of things that are intertwined with that. So that is something that, it's just an action item that we're gonna have to work on. And it, it could take months and they have to even account for it, cause it's gonna take a lot of work on their end to do it. So it's something that we have to do and they're, they're pushing that. You know, is, the more they push on it, the more the. We've been allowed to go another year and so that'll be one of the things that we'll have to address with them is, okay. We need to kind of work plan on how to do that and actually get our numbers, financials to make sure that their estimates, okay, is that off? Is there somewhere missing and what's best for the organization? Other agencies have done something similar and so we'll reach out to them to find out how they did or what they did. And there might be opportunities to, to work together with them as well.
So that'd be nice.
Uh, we just really wanted a, uh, some type of dollar amount put in there that was based in somewhat of a reality.
Right.
Cause there's so many things involved with it. Yep, but again, I don't have a proposal saying this is our recommendation to go this route, but.
A hundred and three seven K.
Yeah, that, a hundred and thirty some thousand. I would, I would recommend uh, uh cancelling the contract. You can do it. You can notice it's mutual and I wanna make sure that they're paid through the end of the, end of the quarter. I mean, that's, Carson said as well, I'm leaning on that, but I think that's a, a significant savings. And the things that Hank was doing was, again, give us the tools that it's not gonna be our bread and butter for Laura and I. But it's how we can work and do projections and look at things or we talk with the union on something, it's like, hey, let's see how this impacts that. I wanna know, okay, when can we fill certain positions or were those benchmarks that, okay, when we see this? If these things happen, then this is when we can take action. And it's, it's just using that, bouncing that stuff off of what we're already doing to help really guide us in what next steps we make.
The, there's one area that I am concerned with and I, I spoke to you about it. When Randy uh Chief Fair came on, came on board, um, I begged him from onset that he was gonna need to have like an assistant chief. Cause it's gonna burn out. I mean, and by the time he decided to do it, he was already into the, well into being well done. And then jerky, I mean, he became jerky at the other end. We don't want you to be jerky. We don't want you to be well done. So we have to do something of which to be able to give you the ability of which to um have a life. Um, because you won't have one if we don't have somebody working side by side with you as an assistant to you. So um, we need to.
Speak then to fire department planning in that regard.
Yeah.
We're looking at, their proposal clearly had stated they think we should not, not hire a deputy chief. Take that position vacant until. Those numbers stabilize on line eighteen. Yeah, the infamous line eighteen.
I think, I think the reason, I miss, I'm just sitting here like we're taking this all in and kind of just in like this. I mean, we've, it seems like every year since I've been on this, we've had these same conversations, like this budget and the people and serving our community and. I think the tools have gotten better, but we're, it's still, it's the same conversation I had with Randy six years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I don't, I, I didn't wanna say that with them because obviously, I, I don't, I mean, we need an assistant chief. We need a person at the front desk that, that costs the most money.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we need people. So that, that is like where my heart is and it's been my heart for the, when we started this six years ago and we haven't got past that. It's still the same, like, you're gonna get burnt out and you guys always say, I work so hard, I work so hard, I work so hard. So we've got to solve that problem.
And that overtime, he's gonna be working overtime.
I mean.
Yes, but I mean, like.
Working her butt off.
Yes.
I can't believe how exceptional, besides this presentation, you are doing. We need you, but we also need to support you. And I don't feel like we're doing that.
We need an HR position.
Yeah.
So all this is. And that, and that was, that it did include another administrative.
And I think that that needs to be, yes.
Fill in the position, not in.
Well, not adding, correct. Thank you for this.
And I, all this is great. These tools I think are gonna be great, but the bottom line is we, we don't have the money, we gotta figure that out.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, now that we've gone through all this uh analysis.
How do we slide in things to the right and the left?
Well, I think, yeah, I think we're sliding as much to the right as we can, right? But uh, uh, that, I think our only other option in addressing that need is that this idea of an FBC. And that's a scary idea.
It takes a person to run that.
What's that?
It takes a person to probably run that whole programming.
Sure, sure.
So there's another.
Yeah.
Say, that's another body of somebody who's gonna.
Yeah, that, that would be an all hands on deck from the membership, from the community also. Uh, you know, community advisory committees are always fantastic when the community gets involved and helps us with some of these.
This.
Solutions.
This is the result of a nineteen, whatever it was, sixty-eight law that limited fire departments to a buck fifty.
Yes.
Right, like, we're, we're bound by that and a buck fifty doesn't pay for a.
I don't think there are too many other agencies that are at a buck fifty, but.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
That's what makes us kind of nichey also, uh, and doing a tremendous amount with that. The GMT things, all of these little creative things are basically the reasons why you've had this, this extension to this point.
Right.
But now we're running out of the ability to like create some additional revenue to come in.
And we're doing a great, we have done a great job by bare bones for six years since I've been on here, but it's, it's gets old. And that's where I'm at. And that's why, that's why my attitude is the way it is, because I feel like this is kind of repeat and repeat. Cause every meeting we talk about the budget and the need and like how we're gonna, how, how are we gonna stretch this dollar? You know, it's just, it's, it's, it's all, it's all, right?
You know, a million dollars got a lot more expensive the last few years, you know? I mean, it used to cover a fire engine and now it does not.
Which puts us even more of a bind, so um.
So, and then the GMT money, I do really wanna start having us, this is gonna sound bad, but I'd like to see what it looks like without that money in there.
And that's a, you, we can plug that into the.
Yeah.
To the spreadsheet.
Cause that's gonna have to be our reality in case something happens.
We are.
But our program just began and so there's a waiting period.
Oh.
They had not been filing for GMT before, so they go through, they do the billing, they submit to it. Then they have to go through a cost report audit. Um, you know, Claude's been going through those for years. We've been receiving in GMT money even this year.
Is there any talk of uh reducing the amount of GMT money that um?
For CS coming in under the revenue that we forecasted for this year.
It actually makes me feel a lot better, um.
Is, is your concern about the federal program not being available in the future? Is that?
Um, no, I've spoken with Systems Design Less that does the billing. And while there might be a little bit of a lag time, and honestly, I think the lag time is more from them submitting it. Because now they have a new client, could you sound, that's going to much, you know, they only have so much staff to be submitting them. So I think that's personally why we've seen a little bit of a delay in some months and actually receiving it. And I think it's just with them submitting it to the program, but we are receiving them.
That's a great question. So, so for all the information that we have, there's no reason to think that that's not a stable.
Right.
Revenue source in this.
Not at this time. Ask Systems Design Less if they saw any, you know, pause or resistance. And they can, any information that there was an issue.
So. What could be do? So I'm a little hedger on this one here. Um, it's, it's kinda like your house stuff again. If there's a chance that they may have, like, let's say twenty percent withdrawal of funds that you normally are used to having to complete withdrawal of funds. How do we make it such that we do something like that and put the money aside? So that when those days do happen, we have some leverage for us to be able to kinda withstand that problem and be able to go in another direction.
I think I've already done that and actually did it the last couple of years by forecasting less revenue and just the standard bill, less tra- transport money.
Yeah.
Even though, you know, people were wanting that number to go up because we had been bringing more in. Than the four hundred thousand or four hundred fifty thousand that we had budgeted for that. Um, but it kind of was a buffer in case there was an unknown.
I did see it that way, yeah.
And every year you have to do, uh, do an interim settlement.
Mm-hmm.
Chief Fair was really good about not billing what the full amount was, that the program said that we could bill to Medicare and Medicaid. Um, and with that, when we do our annual cost reports, we end up getting a settlement back. But there's always a chance that if we were trying to bill out too much, they could ask us to pay.
Great.
Um, and I know other agencies um that have had that happen to them. And it has not happened here, just with the way that it's been historically set up. I think it was set up very well here. Um, and the budget for the revenues on both the standard transports and the GMT kind of work with each other to kind of help with possible unknowns.
And the reason why I'm saying this is because Medicaid right now is tapped to have about seven hundred billion dollars coming out of it. For that big package.
You're saying?
Yeah, and so I can see the trickle down, particularly since people, many of the people who would be on Medicaid. Would be in nursing homes or there'd be kids or poor people. So that is gonna dramatically pinch. It's gonna pinch all of us. And so that's why I'm, I'm looking for what that could look like.
I think our best move would be to monitor our general bond balance, right? And, and this, you know, this line seventeen percentage, yeah, right, right, to be at thirty percent or above. I think that should be a very intentional.
Mm-hmm.
Point of attention, right? Uh, and just over the year, years, you know, making or holding back on the spending that we can at all possible, if at all possible. Uh, just to help encourage that percentage to grow, right, mitigate. I mean, you know, a reduction maybe for year over year.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's, that's what I, I guess I'm trying to, to be ready for a lot of that. I, I have to tell you, it was traumatizing uh when I came in as a commissioner, to let two of these guys go. It was traumatizing to me and it still is. I can just, you know, it gets me.
But I, I wanna touch on a couple of things here. The GMT, I think it's something that we have to be really intentional and continue to have a conservative view on. Um, I think it's something that as we were already working on the twenty-six budget.
Mm-hmm.
That we almost looked at that as some, not even including that in the budget, which, which is pretty hard to look at. But looking at how, you know, we get it in, how we can use it, but just, okay, if we had to go without in twenty-six.
Absolutely.
What would that look like again? Yeah, it's, it's not, not fun and these uh, these recommendations on here, you know, I'm just taking the conversation of if. Just the part of, if we didn't fill the DC spot and there was the desire of the board to put me in the chief spot, just looking at the impacts of that. That is, it's not, I don't take that lightly at all and um. It, it's a lot of work and Chief did it and thankfully we have another BC that helps out a lot. But again, I did, I wouldn't put those things on our other BCs. They're already doing a lot and it's, you know. President Headed and Local and I've had conversations on that, that's, that's, that's a huge thing and there's. The organization's worked hard to get that spot, not to say that spot is special, but it helps with workload and things that make it so our crews can go on calls. And we don't wanna regress back.
Right.
People have worked really hard to work and get the skills they have and do their job at the different ranks they have. Um.
We're not going back.
Also. You know, there's part, we need to fill that admin position. We need to look at, okay. How do we, how do we minimize the impacts of the rest of the organization? You know, so we, we have that buffer and I would be like, okay, what is the earliest that we can do it? I mean, what, what Chief would wanna come here if there was a concern of that position was, couldn't be afforded. So we need to show stability.
Uh, I think that.
Show stability for our organization, but also.
I agree, I agree. And that's like, like this whole thing with like our community, we're like in this middle of growing and not growing.
Yeah.
Like the same thing with these positions, like if we don't hire somebody, it's gonna, there's gonna be consequences. If we hire somebody, there's gonna be consequences. It's, it's, it's like.
Should we do a brain corner? I think it's.
And it's tough, but we have to make that decision.
And it, I think it needs to be the goal of the organization, you know, in the very near future, putting together a plan of how to ask for more funds from the community. And what would that look like? Cause it's, you said it, it's a cyclical, we keep having the conversation and it's. It's the definition of insanity, not for the lack of trying and being creative.
Well, I know, I know.
Great job of really grinding it out and doing the most with, with little, but it's, what do we need to do? What does that look like? And again, the community gets to say what service level they want, but it's. We need to try very hard to say, okay, this is what we need and we're not gonna ask for anything more than we need, but it's.
Yeah.
It, it keeps coming up and it's not gonna get cheaper and we just need to have a plan. And it's gotta be a real clear plan. It can't be shooting from the hip. We need it just because it's gotta be really why we need it. And our levy will need to go to the voters in twenty-eight or to renew again in twenty-nine. So it's, that is part of it. Part of this, I think, is looking at financials and seeing, okay, does it stabilize? Do things get predictably better? But if history is any predictor of what the future is, it's, we're gonna have these challenges and it. We need to build a fire station, but we, that would take a bond. So it's, you really wanna real clear financial plan of what the asks are gonna be, but we have to know what they are truly that.
And the non AV funding source stabilizes, yeah, stabilizes that revenue.
So I just.
Which stabilizes our services, service level for our community.
So I think we also need to do an explicit rank order of priorities. Um, because if we don't do that, um, we don't get there. We just kinda haphazardly start here. We see a squirrel, we go over there, we come back and this doesn't get done again. So.
And right now we need to, we need HR and we need a fire chief.
Right.
Can we make a motion to get a chief?
Tonight, I. I think that's appropriate, that we move forward.
We can, we can.
If it's.
Yeah.
No, we can.
I would discuss it and.
Yeah.
I would think.
Bring it to June's meeting to take action on.
And I think we also need to, to weigh against the money we have, right? I mean, we need to plug the numbers into the tools we've just purchased essentially and see what it does to our.
And he did include a fire chief in that model.
A chief, but no.
No, no, I'm, I'm talking about just fire chief.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but would you like, but we, your point is, I, please, please keep going with your points. I think we should do what you exactly mean.
Uh, well, yeah, be- before. Uh, well, yeah, be- before we commit to. Filling positions that aren't currently filled or certainly adding any positions, right? Like, we have to use the tools, right, we have to plug it in and see. See what it does to our trajectory, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would also. Or let me, I'd like to speak on. Bringing me up as the the fire chief and um. It's not something I take lightly, and it was something that when Chief Fair approached me about it last year is. I didn't come here to say, hey, I wanna be the fire chief, I'm here to serve in the best way I could at that position, didn't wanna assume that position was gonna be mine in the future and. I I originally said no because. I truly feel that just a one-for-one replacement is not what's best for this organization, it. The this organization needs more than just. Me taking that spot in another position, but. We're at a spot where we can't, we can't afford that right now, and I also, I didn't want to take away from the opportunity of the organization to look at other options. And to look at funding and to look at mergers and look at just, I didn't wanna put my name out there and prevent the organization from being able to do that and it's. When. Chief Carson brought this up to me, you know. Again, it's I wanna do what's best for the organization, I was like. Huh, okay, you know, it's. It's not because I don't think I can do it by any means, it's, you know, just. Who we need in these spots and having the right people and enough people and it's. It's not something that I take lightly one bit and um. I care about this organization, I wanna finish my career here and. I know I can do a good job, it's not gonna be easy by one bit without that support. But thankfully, we have great people, it's. We have great folks that are very passionate, that love this community, that help check me when I got horrible ideas, help encourage me when I have good ones and. And just really care about this community and it's. If it's the board's desire to go down that road, again, I'm not asking for the board to make that decision right now, I wanna make sure the board makes some intentional thing, thought on this. But we do need stability, um. Be before chief even announced it, there was uncertainty, but which, we've had a lot of uncertainty for more than a year. And there's a lot of things that we have to accomplish that. Making sure that we have that spot buttoned up and really know where we're going and what we have to work on, I think is huge and. I will support the board and whatever decision they go with. But it's it's just.
Fresh air.
It's a, you know, it's not, again, it's not something I take lightly and. Truly having the right person, and if there's another opportunity to talk about mergers and consolidations, they're gonna be all for it.
Yeah.
I mean, Chief Tyman did that at Maple Valley, it's like, he was the chief and then. Guess what, it, eh, at the end of the day, it's what's best for the community and organization, so.
Well, I appreciate you speaking to your thought process and your desire for that position, I personally do support the idea of you becoming our next fire chief, we. We interviewed you through the process, you. For that deputy chief, succession planning in mind, knowing that Randy, Chief Fair's time was limited, and I feel like you've been vetted through that process and. And you've had the transfer of knowledge from Chief Fair that. You know, if we lost you, I think we'd lose. It it's not stability for this department, you know, starting all over with another chief and other ideas, and I really feel like. You've done a great job, you're continuing to learn, you've developed great relationships with all the other agencies around, there's.
And you're you're adding value to all of the stuff that you're doing, I mean, Chief Fair didn't do any of these tools, any of this stuff, and now you're kind of getting your own. Way you're gonna do things and you can run with it now with your people, and I think it's, I think it's. That is, I think you've done a great job because it hasn't been easy and it's not gonna be easy.
Kind of support you.
Yeah, so I think for June's meeting, this is something that we please.
So that's an explicit priority. So then the next one would be getting him some help, because I'm telling you right now, um.
Yeah, for all possible, we gotta avoid.
What would the time have to be for that, for how you get into the tools though, because I mean, we know that it's not gonna, even if we plug it in, we know it's not gonna be a positive.
Yeah, a just a deputy chief?
Yeah, yeah, what do you, what do you, what do you guys, anybody have any suggestions or? January, I mean, let's be honest, we plug in the numbers, they're still gonna be.
Personally, I think uh I think this year's budget process should be an extremely frugal budget process, kind of like, like the idea Chief had about.
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six.
Correct, yeah, yeah, so the development of, sorry, next year's budget. Uh, I I like the idea of trying to take that GMT money out and seeing if we can live without it.
When do we?
You know, per se.
Start getting worksheets from the county in late September, early October.
So that's where the numbers would come from, from plugging into the budget, and I I agree with you that.
And then, yeah, and then, so I guess, I guess I'm a, I'm a data guy, right, like I. I have a hard time making a decision on ideas and.
See, and I'm way more emotional.
Sure, sure, just, you know.
Which is why we're bored.
Right, exactly, that's, that's how a good team is built, right? Um, but so. For me to process uh uh a decision like this, I would like to see some numbers, play with the numbers, plug the data and see what happens with it. Um, and then.
But so you guys wanna wait a year then, Eric, are you saying, like?
Uh, I think, I think we could make some headway in the twenty twenty-six budget building process, right? I mean, if it's just.
With a goal of, you know, a goal of if it makes it work for twenty twenty-seven, I think that would be.
Right, right, at least we can say a plan about it would be.
Yeah, but I wouldn't wait till twenty twenty-seven or too far into twenty twenty-six without help from him. I cannot. Push that hard enough, and then also uh to be able to get that body that we're supposed to have for admin, um, those.
Yeah, I think that's the next priority, fire chief, and we need to also speak to an HR position, so. Have you, oh, look, oh, did you collect, have you been getting any job descriptions and, okay, so we're getting information.
Stuff together that we can look at it and figure out what is the best for.
At least.
They got, she was budgeted this year, it's been vacant.
Yeah, so what's the soonest that we could start that search and advertise that search?
Probably in the middle of next month or so, I think it's. We gotta get some stuff done.
Yeah, I would like to get it out in the next week or.
Yeah.
And advertise for it and start interviewing, I mean, it'd be ideal to have that position. Might get a trade, but I would start by July.
I think you could actually, I think you actually get, there's a lot of people that are being laid off. That are really good people.
Yeah, just, but everything else going on, I'd probably say probably the middle of next month, getting that out and.
And and all these numbers were built with twenty twenty-five budget.
Yep.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, I feel like June is a big month. We need to name a chief and we need to get an HR.
Yeah.
And an assistant chief.
Well, I don't know that we're gonna do a deputy chief this year, I mean, I just.
What happens if we promote up then, uh, we promote up, maybe one of them.
Well, then we still need to replace another body, it's, you know, we still need to maintain, maintain our staffing. For the citizens, you know, we can't create a vacuum.
I think. I think at a minimum, going through the rest of this year and. You know, hope for the best, prepare for the worst, that. Possibly not filling that spot in twenty twenty-six. But the goal is to fill that, again, I look at, I wouldn't ask, I wouldn't ask another member to. Think about that position that's already here or someone else applying it, if there was financial instability and just understanding, okay, where we're at and. I think with having the rest of this year will be good, and then working on the twenty-six budget and working through that will be a great picture on that, not that it's. Will be fun by any means, but it's.
I just see your overtime load just going off the charts.
Well, it's just working, it's not overtime, it's working actually.
Yeah, there's, it's not overtime.
And it's.
So, they're salaried employees, there's no overtime. He's just. Flex hours and, yeah.
The flex hours, we go out of, they're just gonna blow.
If I may, I think another, um. Again, to speak to this, this work that Laura and Chief have done, um. Developing the twenty twenty-six budget, we're going to have a much better understanding of what things cost, right? What what are our operations?
I'm gonna be working with you.
Uh, uh, each year and everything, so, you know, we're historically, I think, because our tools weren't. Um, you know, extra high tech, right? We were, we were kind of basing a budget on guesses, on on educated guesses, right? But uh, but with the work that's been done, those guesses will be a lot more educated, and so. It'll be in, I personally look really forward to what. What Laura uh presents to us or what we start looking at when we're developing the twenty-six budget.
Let's see these ops lineup.
Yeah, right, we might see that. You know, the note, these are based on our twenty-five numbers, maybe our twenty-five numbers aren't quite as accurate as they ought to be.
Right.
Right, we're twenty-six, we'll be able to tighten those things up. And maybe reduce expenditure just by accurate reporting, right? So.
I mean, I don't love that projection of waiting, but I think it's the only choice we have, so I.
I think, I think is, if we're gonna have any hope of.
Yeah.
You know, maintaining a thirty percent unbalance, I think we have to be real cautious and calculated in decisions we make.
And I don't, I don't disagree, I I just keep struggling to find a way.
With complete understanding and support of not burning our people out, I mean, I I come from a.
But we can't operate in the, we can't afford to operate in the ideal at this current time.
Yeah.
And there's just sacrifices to be made.
Vice President Headache, I just wanna make sure. Yeah, whenever you wanna jump in.
Yeah, no, there's a lot being discussed, uh, my name's Tyler, I'm the vice president of Local three nine three one. Um, there's a lot of challenges that have been discussed tonight, I would like to highlight some positives and that the commissioners. You guys have delivered on the promises that you've made to the voters and increasing minimum staffing to five. Um, I would echo the words of President Headache when I say that. The change that the crews feel is palpable, um, and increasing our ability to serve the public, so. You know, as we tackle these challenges as a group, um, you know, there there has been good work that's been done, and sometimes it can feel like. It's unending, but um there are wins along the way, and you guys have been doing a good job. Um, I think in the presentation tonight. The the trend lines that we're seeing are positive.
Mm-hmm.
I think that that echoes that the. The department is on positive fiscal footing, I think that's a big takeaway from tonight, I think that there were some difficult decisions that were made. And I appreciate that things were cut before people, and I really appreciate uh the recommendation from Puget Sound. Uh, took that into account, and so uh preserving personnel and preserving safety equipment, you know. Those are important, and uh I do think that the. That everyone's been fiscal, fiscally responsible with the way that money's been spent, um, so. Job well done, and I think that this meeting tonight is important in laying out a road roadmap for the steps moving forward, so.
Well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's, you know, you mentioned the, been in the spot before, and it's, that's why it's good to recognize the things that have been done, I mean. The voters passed that levy, so we could build a five-person staff in it, that took so much time to do. I mean, to get that, but we have great people that have made that happen, we have one operations BC, we have a farm marshal BC, and it's.
Mm-hmm.
It's. Those are, those are big things and having five people on duty all the time is is huge, and we've done a lot, you know.
Our community, communities and served.
And it's, again, these these suggestions are. Not uh reducing uh service levels to the community.
Yeah, thanks for saying that, that's a good thing to say.
Yeah.
And that's a huge thing, is we've always tried to add services, uh, meet the community where they're at, help out where we can, and. Uh, the community loves us and we just wanna keep that up, but it's. These suggestions aren't. They're, they are impactful, but we're trying to reduce them as much as possible and it's. Um, I'm grateful that there's concerns of not filling that spot, it's better than trying to say that, no, we need to keep doing it, and everybody else is saying no, and it. I truly wanna make sure that we keep the people we have, we attract mature people that are coming here, um, but we just. It's the same thing, and so how do we move forward with keeping the trajectory that we're doing, and so.
We keep the seat, seat open, it's not, we're not eliminating that position, that's definitely to be filled.
And a big thing for me was just making sure that we could fill that other admin spot, I mean. For the past few years, we've been down off and on, and we haven't been able to realize the the benefits of having a fully staffed positions with. Actually being off at different times and then chiefly, it's just. So I really, I'm hopeful, again, it's not gonna make the.
Well, that burns out the other end.
Yes, sunny days all the time, but it is huge and. I wanna keep the positions and the people that mean the most to us, and it's our folks that are doing the work on, in the union and then admin and it's. Um, I'm I'm grateful for the help and it's, it. Need patience and it's gonna be a lot of work, but the goal will be to fill that, but I see it as build a fire chief. Build a DC as soon as we can, but as soon could be a couple of years, build an admin spot, you know, within the next, next couple, couple of months. And start working on that capital facilities plan, because that'll be huge for using that impact fee money. And giving us more things and, you know, putting off that train prop. That's, that's a gut pinch, but okay, it's putting it off till we can have the right documentation and doing all that together to leverage the the taxes that we do pull in and. And then just figuring out long-term, what do we need funding wise, if we need to ask for more money, why, and really show that, and what the community is gonna get for that is is a big thing for us.
Well, I appreciate that that just more than a year or two or three ago. Uh, we did mission critical stuff where it's like basically. Get down to your bare bones, and I think we are at bare bones, I don't know if there's really that much more. We can ask to slice off from any department, um. Entity as as we speak, so.
Other, other than by like uh more accurately reporting costs.
Exactly, yeah, but beyond that point, it's not gonna be really a tight enough to get that prop or to. Maybe keep the lights, it's it's that tight, I think that we've gotten down to.
Feel pretty good about.
Yep.
What were that?
Yeah.
Last thing I have tonight to talk about is fire commissioner vacancy, we have a member that is officially given his resignation, it's been reported to the county. So we officially have an open seat that we will be looking for an appointment for. So if there's anybody out in the community that would like to. Be a fire commissioner, need to set up a date to.
Can we do like a closing date on that, like? Apply by or turn.
Yeah, we need to.
In by end of July, August, what do you, what do you think, what do you?
We, we can put out a, you know, we can put out a announcement, we have to do the proper steps of notifying, there's, it's a very small window, but it's also. You wanna make sure that it's it's heard and that the.
Notified properly, yeah.
But I think if the board were to. Um, just give me direction to work with my staff to.
Mm-hmm.
Put that announcement out, figure out if you would, the board would wanna do interviews, you know, for potential. Candidates, if you wanna do it at the next meeting or a different meeting, um.
I'm fine with the next meeting, you wanna do next meeting?
Do we have, well, are we gonna have enough interest by the next meeting?
That's what I would.
Well, it's only like three weeks away.
Yeah, I think July is a more realistic time.
Hey, especially with the whole, you know, summertime and whatnot, but it's, we can do all the, get the the ball rolling with the notification and. If the board would like to shoot for the July meeting.
I would love to shoot for July if we have people that are willing to apply for those positions to be interviewed.
Yeah.
For commissioner position number four. Um, that would likely be. Quite about a year and a half long appointment before the next available commissioner election.
For that.
And, yeah, for, the election would be in November twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, do you see anything wrong with that?
Does that seem?
For the July meeting, just to make sure we got everything.
Checking with King County to see if it's a ninety-day notification, or a fifteen-day.
Oh.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, because I think we have to fill it within ninety days or we try, but it's, yeah. How long, we need to know how long we have to put the notification out. So, I mean.
So I think that July lines.
If the board wants to get it filled as quickly as possible, we can, as soon as we know the. What the timing is and how long we have to do it, and we can make sure that we put it out for a couple of weeks so people are aware of it.
I think, I think that's fair.
Set the goal for July, and if we have to adjust, we have to adjust, right?
Sounds good, I mean, yeah, I mean, if we don't have anybody applying, then we need to try harder.
July doesn't work.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so, I'm I'm on board with that for sure.
We'll wait to hear back from the county and have some, but yeah, if you guys give you direction to get that announcement out there and.
Yeah. Um, and then we'll just, our next regular meeting is on June eighteenth, so.
I will not be able to attend, I'll be at work, which may or may not be able to zoom in, uh, so.
Yep.
Now that we're down to just, we're, you know, short a seat, is that something we want to entertain, potentially moving to meeting or? Oh, do we wanna keep?
Would you be okay if Aaron reached out to the board and put some other dates out there around that same time to see what works? Or if we can pick a date.
Yeah, that's, you know, July was, I, yeah, that's in June, I have July, I'm a little not so as well, but June, sure.
Yeah, you know, I don't, I'm not trying to make exceptions for me.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
We're limited to people, yeah.
Yeah, everybody there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if one of us has something that comes up, then we don't have a forum.
These two, so it'd be nice to be able to have.
So Aaron, you'll reach out and find out dates from everyone and we'll get something.
So on another line.
July, but I can, I will zoom in since we're short, but I I don't think I'll be here, yeah, July, I think.
So on another note, I'd like to talk about Jim. Um, because he did make a big difference. Um, he was one of the guys that came on board when we were really struggling. And uh has made a major, major difference for all of the reasons why we have this. Uh, he's a very big advocate. Uh, he's a very big advocate for not only the fire department but community and he served very well, not only as a police chief. But he was actually a fire chief for this organization and so I would like to give him a big round of applause for staying. And, uh, because it was hard, um, it was hard to, to get up to this point. Um, we didn't exactly come out looking strong, um, but we are very strong now and it's a large part because he was on the, he was on the team.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely, I, I appreciate. Missioners all. Yeah, uh, coming in as a new commissioner with him. There to, uh. Lean fast knowledge and everything, probably, he was instrumental.
Well respected.
Yeah.
Appreciate the service very much.
Yep, I add to that, it's. You'll be missed.
Do we do also have a vacancy on the finance committee, is that something I think we can address out with the commissioner vacancy, I believe that falls. Twelve pies for under the agenda.
I'll join Eric.
Okay.
Cause now we're not gonna have.
Position, we don't have to, there's no.
Make a suggestion though, that maybe if we get a person by, that maybe the new person should get on, since we're both gonna be.
Yeah.
So I mean, I don't know.
So in the interim.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I just think that would be better that so people could learn and just.
I think so, I, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and just learning too. And, and the new tools we have here, so that's a new reading of all this stuff, so I think.
Yeah.
I agree.
Or two and then hopefully we'll get somebody else that.
Yep.
And we'll put more information out, I think it'd be good to put it on our website for that position and just. So if someone's interested that's watching, they can. Stay tuned there, work that information.
All A S A P, yeah.
Yes.
So I know that we have, um, we have a couple of people that are running, um, currently and I think that, um. If you could tell what you, what you know now, um, as we lock, if they wanted to come in to try to. To take, uh, Jim's seat, it causes them some problems on the other side.
Yeah.
We still have a vacancy as after.
Yeah.
So I mean, stability and consistency is key in this organization right now and I think if we can get. Someone to want to appoint for that year and a half and hopefully run for that next election, I mean, it would be great to get. The two upcoming candidates and seats as soon as possible, but I just, I don't.
But they would give up their. Six years, it's six years.
And thank you for logging in tonight and listening to the meeting.
Six years is a long.
It's a really long time, I think four years would be just perfect.
Okay, well.
Okay.
That I entertain.
Before we adjourn, there is a comment I would like to make, um, I do have it written down, so it keeps me on track, but. First off, I'd like to express gratitude to the commission, uh, in Flaw Fire Administration and the Puget Sound team that was here tonight. For including the Inklaw firefighters in these important discussions. Having a seat at the table means a great deal to the men, to the men and women who serve this community. Following tonight's presentation, uh, I'm encouraged by the positive fiscal projections shown. I would emphasize that when tough decisions are needed, that material cuts be made before considering personnel, I think that was evident here tonight and really appreciate that. I would like to commend the commission for delivering on their promise to the voters when they increased minimum staffing to five per shift. And I would affirm the words of Local three nine three one President Headache when he said. The improvement to minimum staffing of five and seven assigned to each shift has been palpable. Operationally, we're feeling more equipped to provide effective and impactful service to the community. In addition, the feeling of being behind all the time and near burnout is improving. I would say that's, that's thanks to the work that you guys are doing here. Looking ahead, while challenges do remain, I'm reassured by the information presented tonight and I am more confident the department is on solid fiscal footing. And is honoring its core value of fiscal responsibility. In closing, I know they're not here, but I'd like to congratulate Chief Carson and Chief Conroy on their announcing their retirement. Under their leadership, they've elevated Puget Sound Fire as an effective region-leading department and their collaborative straightforward leadership will be missed. Thank you again for the opportunity to comment tonight and thank you for the work being, being done by the men and women in this room.
We applaud you too.
Thank you. Well said.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I could just add a quick comment to that, uh, uh. Anything we do as a fire department is because of the work you guys do on that. Um, so I, uh, personally appreciate you guys getting involved, being more involved, in my time here, it hasn't been such. Uh, I love seeing you guys at these meetings, I love the input, uh, I love. This being work of the department, not of the five of us sitting behind these tables, right? So, super appreciate it.
Make sure that we're here.
Yep.
My second.
Sounds good.
All group.
Hi.
Hi.
Alright.
Good night y'all, thank you.
I like this pen.
Those are nice.
I want this pen. These are nice. It makes my writing.